America, in the very power of our foolish hands, we're not nation under God, we're invisible, we're never being enough just for our own.
Thank you.
Hello?
Vinnie, is he there?
Yes, sir.
Can I have your speaker?
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Vinnie.
Hi, Ben.
Welcome.
Mr. Ben Omal.
Here.
Mr. Calvin.
Here.
Mr. Phil.
Here.
Mr. Kay.
Here.
Mr. John.
Rosen.
Mr. Mahalik.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
This is Barcella.
Here.
And Mr. Zola.
Here.
We have one announcement of executive session held as follow of March 28, 2017, reseem personnel. We also have two public announcements and recognitions tonight. The first one is for the Hazelberry School District Trap and Speak Club.
Thank you.
Mr. Gans. People talking on the podium, so I don't know if they're here.
Thank you again, I'm Joe Gans, I'm the head coach for the Hazelberry Trap and Speak Club. And again, thank you so much for your generous support for our organization. We're here tonight, we have several officers and several club members, as well as three, two of the coaches. We have some presentations to make, we have some hats that they would like to pass you out, and a book, we wrote a book which describes the years since 2002 that we have, with your approval, with board approval, to conduct training for trap and speak and sporting play in the Hazelberry School District. If you would like to take a look at that and pass it around, like we presented to the Mr. Patrol, the principal of the high school, he's been in the library. It's a chronological order from the history of the parachute corps, dating back to two thousand and two. Do you have any questions, or do you need to put it in the house?
And the reason, Mr. Gans, for recognizing your club tonight is because you had an undefeated season, correct, or you're...
We've had a very successful season, we're the national, they are the national trap champions, not only in the high school division, but in open, in varsity division, they're the best of the best in the United States. They've done that, lush by mere feat of excellence, by achieving a perfect round, which means all five competitors shot a perfect four, great tie for the national championship. That's admirable, that's very, very, very complimenting. There are two of the members right there, we have Thomas Pacelli, who is standing, and John T. Sebelish.
We were very proud of your club, and thank you for representing the school district in such a great fashion.
Thank you, thank you very much for your support.
Our second recognition tonight will be from the Junior Academy of Science, Mr. Tenali.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening. Tonight, on behalf of the Hazelberry School District and its Board of Education, I have the privilege of introducing and recognizing a group of Valley Middle School students for their academic accomplishments. The following students competed at the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science, which was held at Wilkes University on Saturday, March 4, 2017. As I announce your name, if you would please come forward. The following students that received a first place award will continue and compete at the state competition that will be held May 2017 at the Pennsylvania State University. Those students are Ms. Janet Kubitz. Ms. Kayla Martasowski. And Ms. Emily Kane. And Ms. Isabel Ritz. Ms. Isabel Suratch. Ms. Iris Guns. Ms. Jenna Wederoff. Ms. Molly Zanachko. And Mr. Nathaniel Bacon. Students that received a second place award are Ms. Sarah Balli. Ms. Maddie Woolke. And Mr. Tommy Paul. The student who received a third place award was Ms. Jana Rudden. In addition to the individual awards, the Valley Middle School received the large school award for the highest percentage of first place awards received by school. Ladies and gentlemen, the Valley Middle School Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science students. I'd like to just like to take a moment to recognize the individuals that work with the students and prepare them for the competition that they were involved in. And they are the co-advisors for this club. They are Ms. Amy Fetterman and Mr. John Weaver, if you would stand up.
Mr. O'Donnell, public comment on items. All right, before we start, we're going to remove number 64 and 65.
It's actually a birthday, you know.
Happy birthday.
You sure? Number one, I don't know what you mean, but it's an individual number B. It was a university, it's online, it's a four promise. Okay, that means that somebody is charging students a little money, they pay the teachers, and then that money is not going to scholarship, does not go to some sort of a fund for the college, does not go to a building program, it goes in somebody's pocket, okay? So how much do you guys think it pays for teaching all the students? Just watch, nothing, my comment, I think something needs to be done about that whole situation. I can't, I can't stand how students are just, by any means, teaching, and... The other one that I wanted to, this is the thing you guys want, is item number 30. I hope that there will be some kind of replacement for that, that some sort of community has some sort of regulation on paying the processes. I first thought it was important, yeah, first thought it was important, but there were those restrictions, there were, splitting up those contracts, there was all kinds of stuff going on, and that doesn't mean, don't mean to go back to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, okay. Approve items 1 to 15 with one motion.
Sub move.
Second.
Questions, comments, roll call.
The numbers 1 to 15, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I'd say a motion passed.
Sorry, sorry, I have no phone. We need to approve the board meeting minutes from the regular board meeting and the treasurer report.
Sub move.
Second.
Second.
Questions?
All in favor of approving the minutes and the treasurer report, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I'd say a motion passed.
Prove items 16 through 18 with one motion.
Sub move.
Second.
Questions, comments, roll call.
Number 16, 18, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I'd say a motion passed.
Prove items 20 to 27 with one motion.
Sub move.
Second.
Questions, comments, roll call.
What about like two? We're all ready to motion.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's 20 to 27.
20 to 27, sorry.
Sub move.
One more question, a second on the floor, so sorry.
Wasn't yourself.
Numbers 20 to 27, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Go back to number 19.
Sub move.
Second.
Questions, comments?
What was the process?
It is 500 hours at a cost of...
$90,000.
Yeah, $87,500, I believe it is, or specific.
Mr. Mahalik, with access funds?
Yeah, this one coming out of early...
Not under the general budget?
Right, early intervention and school-based access funds only.
So there's no cost to the district?
No cost to the general fund, that is correct.
Have a purpose, this is from Mahalik?
Professional development for all of our special education teachers, and also however, Ms. Yuzi sees fit to use it, it could also be used for regular education teachers, administrators. It's really what she believes, you know, her main priorities are at the, you know, right out of the gate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we just rolled into it too long, we had discussed that prior meeting, having put on to review IEP, copyright IEP, educate, you know, people writing the IEP and so forth, correct?
Yeah, that is correct, this is, I think, a very good first step, Mr. Zola, in that process, and I'm definitely appreciative of Ms. Yuzi for her efforts in trying to combat, you know, some of the challenges that we see that we're faced with from not only a litigation standpoint, but also in maybe not exactly delivering the best programming to our students.
So, Mr. Mahalik, rather than hire an IEP writer, do you think this has a...
I think down the road, and Ms. Yuzi and I haven't spoken about that, I think down the road, looking at a facilitator might be a great idea, Mr. Ben Omal, however, I think because we're looking at real intensive training out of the gate, having someone with the knowledge, experience, you know, as the attorney that's representing us in situations when we need them, might be a good first start. And I think down the road, and again, Ms. Yuzi and our committee have not even discussed maybe a facilitator, but I think that might be a very, very good avenue as well. But I think the first step is having, you know, all of our special ed teachers go through a real intensive IEP training. And to, you know, maybe piggyback a little bit off Mr. Dr. Child's statement about those student teachers, we have some teachers in this room, some special education teachers too, you know, you really do not get prepared to write an IEP in college. And that's no fault to the colleges, but you just don't have the opportunity. There's a lot that goes into writing an IEP, there's a lot of responsibility, no student teacher is going to be given that opportunity. The training is really on-the-job training, and unfortunately, you basically just jump in and you could go years and years and years without really knowing how to write the best plan and how to implement the best plan, and you get into habits. I know I got into some poor habits, not because I didn't have great, you know, administrators, but I just, it never came to light that what I was maybe doing wasn't the best practice. And then when it does come to light, you say, whoa, but a district of this size, there's no way that one acting director and three supervisors can oversee 1,350 IEPs at a minimum, so...
So why do you do this, like, on the faculty day?
No, the plan's going to be all, it's going to be all year, this will not be an act day, I mean, there's a lot, a lot of scheduling, and I know there's a...
So then it's going to cost me, like, $95,000?
They find out this for a last amount of $90,000, for 500 hours, and then $175 an hour, which is their contractual rate.
But again, if we're taking a lot of the class for 30 years, you have to pay...
They have substitutes.
Absolutely. And that can all...
So that money come out of that.
That can all come out of that, substitutes for training can absolutely...
They don't put any limit on that, do they, out of it?
No, in fact, again, and I'll bring up because it will hurt me until the day I leave this earth, the state came in and took $1.5 million of early intervention access funds out of the Hazelberry School District because we had been too frugal with our money, we had been too responsible, and when they did, they came in and took that money from us. So, first of all, this is something we need, second of all, we're never going to give the opportunity for someone to come take our hard-earned dollars that we saved by providing these services to our students. But yes, you can use access funds to cover the cost of substitutes for professional development days.
Well, then, is training be done in the summer, while?
Well, and again, yes, I mean, that is a possibility, and again, Ms. Yuzi, I'm going to leave that to you, obviously, this is your, you know, you know the scheduling, you know, I know our teachers, yeah, I mean, it's available for the summer. If we can coordinate it with our teachers, I know, speaking with Angela Evans, she will do this in the summer, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, is this law, there's, is that probably a, by $175 times 500 hours is $87,500?
It is, and that's what it is. It is definitely $87,500, by the way, and I don't mean by saying that's being responsible, so I don't know where that number, that other number came from, but that's what it is, yes. Okay.
I can get it, but I don't think it's...
Yeah.
Approve items 28 and 29 with one motion.
Sub move.
Second.
Questions? Roll call, comments?
I don't know what I'm saying.
Well, I know, I was only... Okay, on number 18, it's happening, they need to go...
Number 19, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I'd say a motion passed.
Okay, now, items 28 and 29.
Here's the motion.
Second.
Motion second.
Questions? Roll call.
Numbers 28, 29, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd say a motion passed.
Approve items 30 to 32 with one motion. Questions? Roll call.
Numbers 30 to 32, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd say a motion passed.
Prove items 33 to 36 with one motion.
Sub move.
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Numbers 33 to 36, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I'd say a motion passed.
Number 37, bills?
Sub move.
Second, one question. On the new pledge, is that, is that also a special study? So now that we switch over to that agreement, things...
Any other questions? Roll call.
37, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd say a motion passed.
Okay, continuing on, superintendent's agenda, approve items 38 through 40, sub move.
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Numbers 38 to 40, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 38. I'd say a motion passed.
Prove items 41 to 53 with one motion?
Sub move.
Questions? Roll call.
Numbers 41 to 53, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd say a motion passed.
And approve items 54 through 66, excluding 64 and 65 with one motion?
Sub move.
Second.
Questions?
One question, 64 and 65, 64 is the job distribution?
Yes.
And 65 is the deployment?
Yes.
And they're all being booked?
Removing them.
Removing, okay.
Roll call.
Numbers 54 to 66.
It's not just me.
Excluding 64 and 65, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I'd say a motion passed.
And this came, I'd just take a moment, if there are any audience members this evening who were recently appointed to the position, if you would stand, so we can recognize you. So... Thank you, Mr. President.
Just, yeah, two quick things, Mr. President, one, our retirees, just want to wish them a lot of health and wonderful, wonderful golden years, as they call it, and also thank them so very much for what they provided to our district and to our students. So, thank you. And secondly, if I may, brought this up the other evening at the committee meeting, I know a lot of people weren't able to, the attendants, I'd like to bring them again, discussing the article, well, actually, there was another article on the standard speaker, thank you, Mr. Jackson, covering it, regarding the possible realignment of certain districts, one being the removal of several communities in the Hazelberry School District to join another school district. What I would ask is if our business manager could, for the next board meeting, give us an in-depth review of what that would mean, top to bottom, what kind of funding we would be looking at losing through our taxes, what type of impact it would have on the budget with the loss of the positions, the building, what we would look at doing with the building, excuse me, would we sell the building, would we lease the building, whatever, I just would like a full, and also, if you could give us some understanding, I'd try to read Pennsylvania's school code of what it takes for a community to break off, it seems a little more complicated than what was presented in the one article, so I'd just like if we could have a complete review of what that community, what the communities would need to do, what it involves. I just would like our community to be completely informed and educated on what the process is, and if it's, you know, if it's what they feel is best, then, you know, certainly I would respect that, especially being that I represent not only the whole board, but especially the area that I live in, so I would just like a full analysis of what this means for those communities. I would just hope in the angle of possible.
Many times, Mahalik, I'd like to talk to both of Mr. Reba and Parton. If this comes to fruition, those students will lose the advantage of Music Park Career Center, or Academy of Science, the Arts Humanities. And the reason I'm saying this, I have a granddaughter who's in high school, ninth grade, and I don't think she'll go to Borough. Does that mean if she stays here, we have to pay tuition? If somebody wants to stay here, go to the academy, in that area, and they have to pay tuition for our district, same thing with the career center? I would like to know those answers to the bottom, if we can't get them tonight, I would like to have them, and they present in our...
Mr. John, may I just, since you raised that point, I've been sharing with every media person that spoke to me, and I say this with great pride, how powerful and how fortunate this district is to have, not only its schools across the board, but those four quality high school programs, you can walk away from this district, but you're giving up a lot, because there are very few districts in the state that can offer their high school students for bonding programs like that. And I'm darn proud of that, that we have it, and it's going to be tough to, as you said. I can't imagine some of our family would walk in and do that.
I can't either.
Any other board member?
I think I have one other topic, but please, go ahead, not related to that.
Okay, then I'll just finish by stating that on April 4, coming up, Mr. President, April 4 at 7:00, 7:00 PM, there is going to be a meeting open to the public, right?
No, right.
Oh, okay. Well, then, let's inform the public, there is a meeting on April 4 that is going to discuss kindergarten. We discuss the school year, we have one year in, or almost one year, unless you went to AM, then you have half a year, but nonetheless, you have a group of administrators and a board that is going to discuss in an executive session, that correct?
We're just going to get, how your brothers kind of, well, this is really, and yourself awarded that penny to get some information for the rest of the board, so it really is just an informational session to gather the facts, and then we will bring it to the board. So again, it's the board's, again, attempt at being proactive instead of preemptive. Just as with the junior high committee.
We do have a public budget meeting coming up on March 3, that's this week, it's a Thursday night, I love that.
Six or seven, I believe it is, I believe it's a...
I'll check the website where you're talking, change it to six.
Okay, are you there?
Yes, thank you.
I was just going to bring up at the committee meetings last week, they were very... I told you once about this, depending on the course, maybe being a little bit proactive, and I know we're, you know, depending on what happens with the other schools and that, can we just form a committee to look down the road, you know, we're obviously, we don't have space, we need, I just have a bit of space for storage, you know, for students and that, maybe a committee just to look at buildings that are around the area or sites, or if we could eventually expand, maybe some of our schools, like the Valley, or Rums, or others, to add on, to maybe move, and I agree, down the road, this is not the ancient stone, but just a committee to look, to be aggressive, or proactive, you know, I know it's tough with, you know, finances, but at some point, we may need to do that, so it doesn't hurt to start, and that's all I was asking, if we could form and do that. I guess it should.
Mr. President, are you referring to kind of developing a facilities master plan?
I think that's a ten-year... ...or title for that would be... Thank you.
Any other board member?
I think other, my other board members may be interested, or feel the same, anybody that's...
Oh, me, I'd like to serve up now, with you.
Oh, sure.
Anyone else? Now we'll begin to public comment on non-adjunct items. Now, we'll begin to public comment on non-agenda items.
Can you say, I didn't have items on you?
Non-agenda items.
I just have a couple of questions.
Not you, Antonio?
I have a couple of questions, one he's stuck at saying.
Okay, last Kim then.
My name is Antonio, I'm, am I talking to a girl here? My name is Antonio, and I live in, I live in Haz... A couple of questions. What's this about getting out of the district? Couple of, you know, simply just trying to get out of Haz, or areas for this?
There was a report, sir, in the press enterprise of a group of citizens from the Hazleton area that are exploring options of joining another school district. And that's who I was referencing, just wanting to see if we can get as much information as possible. These have been ongoing conversations with the school district and this group and, you know, I want to be very respectful of the desires and wishes of that group. So, I want to be able to know as much as I need to know.
Did they express a legal, valid legal reason for trying to...
Uh, I don't know that there was a legal reason. I think, you know, they might be a little unhappy with some, I mean, you know, the truth is that we've had to deal with some, you know, serious fiscal challenges here in Hazleton area. We saw again the cutting of full-day kindergarten last year, you know, some other little hiccups that we dealt with and I think we've ironed out and I think we're running very effectively now. But I think they led to that as a reason for wanting to explore other options.
And how long would it take for them to join the...
Well, I mean, that's, you know, it is a long process. It definitely is. I know there's one other school district right now that's been in the state, the southern part of the state, that they've been doing this for about four years now, and they're still waiting for PDE to roll on.
Do they need a petition with signatures?
Yeah.
To my knowledge, yes, they need fifty percent of the communities that would be affected. And Mr. Jackson, if you know more, please speak up. But I, my exploration of this, that they would need fifty percent signatures of the residents of those areas that are affected.
Fifty percent of?
Fifty percent.
And those people over twenty-one, right?
I think it's eighteen, if I'm not mistaken. I think it's over eighteen.
And people with children in this...
I think it has to be fifty percent of the taxpayers of the municipalities where they want to move from, and then they will petition the court.
And they need to be parents?
No, they need to be, they need to be residents.
How can they collect a signature from somebody who's not paying any taxes and has no children? Has no children, not paying any taxes, not owing any taxes. Something to do with education, why would they, why would they get that, that signature?
What was the question, Antonio, I'm sorry?
I'm saying this, sir. If they begin collecting signature for petition, why should they collect the name of a person who has nothing to do with the school district?
Well, there's still...
In relation to...
You're a resident of that area.
If you're a resident, you still have a state. I mean, just because you don't have children doesn't mean you don't have the taxes, doesn't mean that you don't have a state.
Fire. Since you're playing TV, right?
Again, and I'm sure Mr. Jackson has fully looked into this, I've tried, if I've looked at mine. Yeah, it's a familiar process.
Okay, my other concern was something I saw in the, something newspaper about people who are not from Hazleton. People who don't, do not live in, within the Hazleton area school district jurisdiction and they have children in Hazleton schools. People from New York and even from out of the country and we don't even know who they are and their children are not, thank you. Hazleton, uh, oh, why, why is that?
Well, because there is a form in the state code that allows them to give guardianship at no cost to someone that lives in this district. So, we are working with our elected officials to help us tighten that up a little bit to try to get control over who's actually coming into the district. And if not being able to, it's not that we don't want the children, but if they're here, then we can actually charge their school district if they're not a resident.
It's not that we don't want the children.
No, it's like...
We, we, we do, we do want the children, but, but somebody has to foot the bill.
Yes, I agree.
Somebody has to pay for this. We even have people from out of the country.
Correct.
With children, yeah. I don't know what's in there. The income tax, IRS, whatever, whatever, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Karoki Joe?
Before Joe speaks, one clarification, our public budget meeting is Thursday at six, at six o'clock. Go ahead, John. Or is your...
Please, whoever responded this being, gal will be gal, because although I can talk from the heart, then I can get carried away.
I can't ever gal while you tell.
No, but what I'm saying is, Antonio brought up with the, I never knew this till I turned sixty-five. They went, Karoki Joe, because I showed a driver's license, I saw a social security number, and the fellow in front of me said, Wheezy, I said, you called me Karoki Joe, said, but really no. He said, Wheezy, this is what you get, Karoki Joe, this is what you get, and that'll be your third at sixty-five. And she was turning sixty-two. I said, now the poll, and he came out and I said, I might be Polish, but you should do that to, like Antonio referred to. You should do that for everybody, and because he's right. There's people behind me, all my neighbors, they got up and walked out because Miguel come up my front porch after they said we're giving me a police escort out. I said, I don't need that, that's all my neighbors in social security office. I don't need no consent, but that's Miguel, that's Antonio, that's, I said, they're all my neighbors. Now, all I can do is, I'll show you what I, what I, I learned from Kathy Rodriguez. She said, do this. I said, what's that? She said, mi amigo, brought you for be my friend. And I told Kathy, get a warning, you're right. We're B-to-B friends and family, like all tend to all to be. Now, my grandparents gave my older mother's maiden name, Gaudi Scott, Polish. And it's, my dad's name is Stan, that's Pennsylvania. Now, he's referring to what happened to me in a way. I said, you, you politician, not you, not over one useless, you've got a heart. You want to do the best for my little grandchildren, seven to ten, now in the elementary. And he's all want to do the best for the eleven-hundred, my left, right, eleven thousand, eleven thousand, I'm sorry. Now, eleven thousand kids that are out there, he's want to do the best to schools, the best to buses, the best prices, the best of everything. And I happen, I said this before, I happen to walk into your friend and my friend, Chris Fox, the attorney's secretary, and right by the combination minutes and boys' room, ladies' room, a wall, picture, a frame, just big. I said, and you know, I said, he's the best in Luzar County, but this is out of Orlando, Habsburg, the best in all of Pennsylvania, attorney, award. So, I was, you know, a Polish, I was right when I said Luzar County, but I never knew it was for the whole, I'm talking, Habsburg, the best in the whole state. Anyway, my point to all this is, it takes a politician like Trump, I like, I like... My point is, it takes them to change that. You only get what you put in, you don't get no more back. Because I said, why don't I get free money, free food, free house and free life? And he said, you were born in Hazleton, cross the moon, come and die, and you know me. And I said, you only get what you paid in, you don't get nothing else. Like, go back to, all politicians could do that, not you or I. No, and, and please, I, I... Don't say, I might be Polish, that's it. That comment hurts me too, it's that I might be Polish. I don't like that kind of comment. I have many Polish people are my friends. I attend a Polish church every Sunday, the Polish people are very, very nice people. They love it. I agree. I agree, and my next door neighbor is Kathy Rodriguez and, and the list goes on and I don't remember all their names, but they are good people. Not only people from Dominican, Puerto Rico, not only Caribbean, all the country, Mexico, are all my neighbors. And I like them all. I can know what, how to answer, like Kathy talking, Kathy Rodriguez, when I give it in. Mi amigo, brought you, we can all do that to everybody. Mi amigo, brought you, people are friends, because we have grandparents from somewhere. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.